Work session of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to introduce our topic. Thank you.
Great. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I wanted to do a work session with you tonight on our Growing McMinnville Mindfully Program. This is what we're calling Part Two. We have, as I bring up my screen to share with you, we also have on this, on the Zoom meeting Beth Goodman from Eco Northwest, who is our consultant on this project.
And Heather, just so you know, I can't turn on my video. I'm not allowed to.
Okay. So, I think the city recorder can change that for you. Thanks, Beth, for letting us know. So, again, we're telling, we're calling this our Growing McMinnville Mindfully Part Two, and I want to apologize in advance. I had a crazy day and didn't get a chance to edit my slideshow. So, we'll just edit as we go, I suppose. If I, I'll watch the time and make sure we can get through this. But there's a lot of information we want to bring to you. This is a product that is statutorily mandated to the city of McMinnville and needs to be adopted by the end of December of this year and, and then sent to the state for consideration. So, we are on a timeframe for this, and there's a lot of information included in this, and it will start a public hearing process with our Planning Commission in September. So, what we want to do tonight is review our draft results of our Housing Needs Analysis, our Economic Opportunities Analysis, and our Public Lands Needs Analysis. It's updates of our 2019 and 2020 drafts that we did, and many of you are familiar with that, and then discuss next steps. And as I just described, it is a state mandate from House Bill 2003 that McMinnville particularly needs to do this work in regards to a housing needs analysis and an updated billable lands inventory and submit it to the state by December 31, 2023. This meets a couple of your strategies from your strategic plan, one being housing, and that's about conducting thorough and timely planning and forecasting to ensure that regulatory frameworks and land supply align with our market-driven housing needs, and then growth, development, and character is another one of your city council goals. And this works towards that in terms of guiding growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character. For a little bit of background and history, since all of you have not been part of this process, and it's been a many, many, multi-year process, I'll go through this fairly quickly. But I stood in front of you in January of 2017 and told you that I had done an assessment of the long-range planning program for the city of McMinnville. I was hired in August of 2016, and the city manager at that time, when she hired me, asked me to do an assessment of the program, specifically the long-range planning program, and let her know and city council know where we were. So, I went through that process, did the assessment, and told you that I was very concerned. I was concerned about how far behind we were in the long-range planning program. I was concerned about our lack of successful planning for growth management and what it would mean for the city. I also gave you an idea of what I thought it would cost to get caught up in terms of that type of planning. At that time, it was $1.7 million in additional two FTEs. And I also shared with you that if we didn't move something forward, I was concerned that the city was going to start to gentrify due to supply issues. We put together a long-range strategic planning program in that we had a five-year work plan. And in that five-year work plan, we talked about the need to do growth planning in terms of a billable lands inventory, housing needs analysis, and employment opportunity analysis. Now, the reason we talk about that is those are the tools in the Oregon Land Use Planning Program in which cities plan for growth and how to manage growth moving forward. We talked about the next six months doing, starting the process for that in terms of putting together the advisory committees and, and the calendar for how to achieve those efforts. We applied for grants in 2017. We appointed a project advisory committee in 2017 and 2018 specifically to do the needs analysis studies. Kelly Manke, your councillor Kelly Manke, served on that committee with us back at that time, as well as several other people. We developed draft documents in 2018, 19, and 20, and the three documents we developed were Housing Needs Analysis, Economic Opportunity Analysis, and Public Lands Analysis. With that, we, we picked a forecast in terms of a population forecast to use. The state tells us we have to plan for 20 years. They tell us what population we're planning for in those 20 years and how to work towards that. In that analysis, we discovered what types of housing needs we had in the future in front of us, and it looked like we had about a third of our housing needs would be for 80% area median income and less in terms of households. Typically, that is a subsidized housing product. We also saw that we would need about 21% of new homes to serve 80% to 120% area median income. That's usually your workforce income levels. And then 40% would be greater than 120% area median income. And at the conclusion of that effort, we concluded that McMinnville had need for additional land supply based on need for residential land, public land, and industrial and commercial land to the tune of about 1,400 acres for a 20-year land need. And I should say, we chose to do both 20 years and 46 years. That was the furthest we could go out at that time, because if you recall, we were talking about doing an urban reserve area at the same time so that we could collectively have a discussion about growth in this community, land where it would go, and this sort of set the stage for future growth as necessary. We went out into the community, asked the question, "Do you want to grow up? Do you want to grow out, or do you want to do a little bit of both?" So, go very dense, maintain the boundaries as is, expand the boundaries, and be less dense, or do a little bit of both. It was a mixture between out and both, but we collectively discussed, decided as the project advisory committee and city council policy to do both. So, go, go more dense in the, in the city limits and expand the UGB. We, at the time when we were doing the work, did the work in such a way that we created study boundaries for both our urban growth boundary amendment and an urban reserve area. So, we had all that data collected. So, as we were going through that process, it was a three-year process. Land supply was quickly dwindling. We were getting nervous about the ability to continue to develop and support our growing population. And we were, the project advisory committee conversations were starting to turn to a place of challenge. And so, we went back to city council and said, "This may take more time than we thought. There could be challenges to this, and we're concerned about what to do. This community needs more land supply." So, in January 21, 2020, we brought to you many different ways we could look at that, ask the question, "How do you want to move forward? Is there a path for McMinnville that makes sense?" We gave you several different paths, seven different paths to take in terms of how to do growth management. We went through a review of, of sort of green light, red light, yellow light for those different types of paths relative to the city's value systems. And you directed us to evaluate responding to that 2013 reman. So, drop the work that we had been doing for a whole new UGB amendment and go back to the work that we had already done that was remanded back to the city and see if we can thread that needle. So, we went through that process, and we submitted it to the state at, for a UGB amendment. Now, that UGB amendment was for a planning horizon of 2003 to 2023, and it was to serve a population of 44,055 people. And we brought in 662 gross buildable acres with that UGB amendment. So, that's important, because what it means is we were finishing work for a planning horizon that we were just at the tail end of, and we need, and, and we still needed to look forward. But we submitted it to the state. The state approved it on April 9, 2021, and there were no appeals for that. At the same time in 2019, the state was having discussions also about housing supply and how to, how to try to solve the issue here in Oregon. And so, they developed a couple of large housing bills. One was House Bill 2003, and what that did was that mandated to states that they needed to keep updated housing needs analysis, so that state, mandate to cities that they needed to update their housing needs analysis so that we knew what our need was, and we would plan for that need in a timely manner. And so, it said, "Now, you need to do this work every eight years, and for those who are lagging behind on the work, you're first." And they put it into the bill itself and then into the statute. And so, that, that put McMinnville in the first sort of big list of cities to do this work. And we were told we needed to adopt a new housing needs analysis and update our buildable lands inventory by December 31, 2023. So, that's statutory. So, we said, "Okay, that's okay. We have the work. We've been doing it. We just need to update it now, because some things have changed. And so, we'll update what we've done and submit that." Now, if you remember, I said that that land need analysis for that first work said we had about 1,400 acres, and our most recent UGB amendment for the past work brought in 662 acres. So, we suspected when we went back into this that we would still have land need. So, we went back to the state and said, "You told us we have to update our housing needs analysis. We just submitted this UGB amendment to you that took 26 years for this community to get through. Do we really have to do another UGB if we have land need?" So, if you, as a city, do a land need analysis and you show you have need for additional land supply, or you show you have, you have, you have to show how you're going to accommodate that growth. You can't say, "We're not going to accommodate the number of people you told us to plan for. We want to plan for less." You can't say that. You have to tell the state how you are going to accommodate that growth. So, you can do it in a number of ways. You can do it within your existing boundaries by changing your regulatory framework and pushing for more density, or you can expand your UGB to do it. And many communities do both, just like we had talked about here in McMinnville. So, we, we had a discussion of, "Do we really have to do another UGB if we show land need?" Because we had just finished the work for the previous one. So, we talked with the state and had a work session with you, city council, and came back with what that would look like. So, we could scramble and get something done where we complied with this House bill and gave them the needs analysis by December 2023, but also gave them a UGB amendment by December 2023 and just put all of our manpower into that and all our resources into it. And we gave you a cost estimate as to what that would be to make that happen. It was about $440,000. We also talked about going back to the state to try to amend that state law that said we had to get it done in this timeframe, and we estimated that would be about $825,000. And then, there's, there's the opportunity in the state law to do what's called a sequential UGB. No community had done it yet, but essentially, it says you can submit your land need and then negotiate when you're going to submit, how we're going to meet that need with the state. So, we had that discussion with the state at a city council work session, and, and the state agreed to it, and we elected to do this, what's called a sequential UGB. So, we said we would submit the land need by the end of this year, and if there shows need for a UGB amendment, we'll submit the UGB amendment by the end of December 2025. So, picking up where we left off on updating those documents to get something in by the end of this year, we updated the documents in the following ways. We updated the buildable lands inventory, and what we did with that is we included that new UGB amendment. So, all that 662 acres, that's new land supply. So, we brought that into the analysis. And then, we also included development that had occurred through 12, 31, 21 for our planning horizon. Then, we also updated the housing capacity. Sorry, I'm, is anybody else getting feedback, or is that just me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we, we said, we also had to update our housing capacity. House Bill 2001 had passed in 2019 as well. That was the missing middle housing bill, which allowed cities to do more capacity building within their existing city limits. If you recall, when we passed that UGB amendment, there was a lot of discussion of, "How come we didn't include that? We didn't have to legally." But what we did was, we, now, going through this process now, we do have to include that sort of missing middle housing capacity. And then, so that will increase density assumptions. And then, with the rural res, we have several lots within our UGB that came into the UGB in 2003 and have not developed. And they're smaller lots. And the state law says if you have smaller lots, two acres or less in rural residential lands within your UGB, if they have not developed within 14 years, you can assume they probably won't and reduce the capacity of housing on those. So, we did that, and that decreases your. So, with all that said, we applied for grants in 2022. We appointed a new project advisory committee to work on the updates. We invited people who had participated previously to invite if they wanted to participate now. And we also invited new community stakeholders to participate. We hired Echo Northwest. Beth Goodman is on the line for that, and we updated those three documents. And that's what you have in your packet tonight. The Housing Needs Analysis responds to Goal 10, State Land Use Goal 10 Housing, which is, it says that the cities have to plan for a 20-year supply of buildable land for, to support population growth over the next 20 years. And you look at national, state, and local trends. You look at your historical density and mix within your community. You look at your needed housing by price and type, and you have a discussion about housing values and how you want to move forward. You'd have to determine your planning horizon. So, we had already done that. We said it was 2021 to 2041 and 2041 to 2067. We talked with the state about memorializing that planning horizon so we wouldn't have to repeat the work we did previously, which cost about $250,000 to do. And they agreed that we could memorialize that by noticing hearings and continuing the hearings. So, that's what we did. Based on that, we determined, we used a population forecast from 2017, which was the most recent when we first did this work. It has been updated since then. But because of the actions that we took, we can keep that population forecast. We have to look at the buildable lands inventory and understand what's available in terms of land to develop within the existing UGB and city limits. We need to look at how much housing we can put on that current land inventory, and then we need to look at what our housing need is, and that, that comes up with our delta. So, I talked about the population forecast that we're using. For, for the two target points, we're looking at 47,498 people in 2041. And if you recall, our most recent UGB amendment was for 44,055 people. So, not that big of a difference in terms of population. And then, for 2067, it's 62,803 people. The buildable lands inventory is, is a scientific effort of going through every lot in McMinnville and see what's buildable and not buildable, and the state law sort of describes to us how to do that assessment and verify it. And this is the final map for our updated McMinnville Buildable Lands Inventory. It shows both land within the city and land that's in the UGB now for development and all the different zones in which that land sits. We calculate how much acreage we have in the different city zones that we have and how much is in county zoning. So, mo, so we have 763 total acres of vacant or partially vacant buildable land. Of that, most of it's in the county, so 448 acres is in the county, which is about 60% of the overall acreage available. Then, 17% of our acreage, 131, is in what's called Water Zone 2. Water Zone 2 does not have any water, so it can't, those lots cannot be, that land cannot be developed currently. And then, 24%, 184 acres is in city zoning and has water service. So, for current developable land, we have about 184 acres available. Most of that land is in one- and two-acre parcels where it's dependent on people making the choice to partition their, their, their current property and, and create two parcels out of it. So, we're looking for personal choices from people, which is very difficult. I wanted to point out two things. We have 34 acres of R4 zoning and 47 acres of C3 zoning. C3 allows multifamily in it. But if you look at our buildable lands inventory, this is buildable land based on December 31, 2021. So, a lot of the property that's showing up as buildable is being built right now. So, the, the R4 land is basically the land up at Baker Creek North for the most part, and that's being built out right now. We expect to see about two more years on that development. And then, the R2 land that we have available right now is Oak Ridge Meadows. That's just going to plat here sometime in the next three weeks, and will be available to the market as well. The Water Zone 2 is over here in the West Side Hills area, which is mostly R2 land. And then, our, our commercial land is down over here, mostly in the Three Mile Lane area, where you see the bigger chunks, the biggest chunks of it being that, the Evergreen Campus, where there is no planned housing, and we have a master plan on that site that's been adopted as a planned development zone that won't allow housing. And then, we have the 27 acres that came in with the UGB amendment that has been put into vines already. So, that is no longer going to be developed. And then, we do have the land that's over east of, west, excuse me, west of the hospital and the hotel there, and that actually will be developed as multifamily housing. So, in terms of housing capacity, House Bill 2001 says you can increase your capacity up to 3%. So, you can make an assumption that 3% of your land is going to build at a higher rate than you originally assumed in terms of density. So, we brought that into our overall analysis, and that covers most of the existing residential land that's within the city. The rural residential reduced capacity I talked about looks at the one- and two-acre lots. We, most of it is in our, what we call our Riverside South neighborhood that's over just east of the industrial area. And if you look at this map, you can see where all the ones and twos are. That's the size of the lots. And relative to, since they have not come into the city, redeveloped the losses, we can assume they will not redevelop at a higher use.
Heather?
Yes.
So, you're saying we can throw those out as part of what we count?
We don't throw them out. We reduce capacity. So, originally, when we first did our UGB amendment, I think we had 550 units, we assumed would happen in this area. That's been reduced considerably because of that. So, we're no longer saying that area's going to redevelop with 550 units. It's now going to redevelop with X number of units. It impacted about 54 lots, I believe. Beth might correct me if I'm wrong, but somewhere around there. We have, we had some of these rural residential lots in some of our other UGB areas, too.
So, would you hazard a guess as to how many, how much, how many acres we might actually not have to, I mean, that we can add versus subtract?
The differential, Beth, was that 72 housing units?
I was remembering 74, but I could go with 72.
Okay.
Right around there.
Basically, what's happened is the House Bill, if, I mean, we could get down into the nitty-gritty numbers, and I don't remember them offhand, but the, basically, House Bill 2001 increased capacity by 3%. This decreased capacity on 50-some odd acres of land. Those two wash for the most part.
Okay. I think I remember this conversation from a couple nights ago.
And if, details are in your document, if you're, if you want to follow the thread through there. But the analysis is all there.
Okay.
So, I think it's important to talk about the values that shape our housing strategies, because that led to some of the decisions that were made as we talked about housing capacity. So, the city has made a value statement that everybody deserves to live in a great neighborhood. And what that means is that there's a variety of housing types serving a variety of generations and a variety of incomes in these neighborhoods. So, you're not just segregating one type and one type. We've also made the value decision that we don't like sprawl, but we don't like high density either. So, that's kind of getting into the both piece of it. Find the middle ground there. We made the value statement that we shouldn't assume that all multifamily is low-income housing. So, there is a lot of multifamily developments that are built, which we assume, you know, when we're doing our data, people assume that that's going to serve our low-income households. But some of that multifamily house, housing is actually serving high-end households, depending on where it is and how it's built. The Pearl District is a great example of that. We also said we shouldn't push all lower-income households into multifamily housing in one area. And we said housing choice is important. We want people of all income levels to have the opportunity to have the choice to buy and own housing so that they can have, build real estate equity or rent, and also have the choice of have, being in the common wall units or detached units. And so, we talked a lot about what that would look like and the types of housing to use. We talked about how, as lots get smaller, access to open space is even more important than it's been in the past. And then, we looked at a mix of housing types in McMinnville. So, in McMinnville, this chart shows here what's happening at the state level, Yamhill County and McMinnville. The dark blue is single-family detached homes. The teal color is single-family attached. That's, that's duplexes and townhomes. And then, orange is multifamily. And we talked, based on our values that we talked about as a project advisory committee, their recommendation for the future, moving forward, and how this, how this, how we assign housing capacity, our future goal is that we will go to 55% of our housing units serving single-family, detached, 12% attached, and 33% multifamily. So, that, that is a built-in assumption into the capacity conditions. Our existing housing conditions, we do a lot of data work, so I just, I'd share some of this with you. We're showing about 58% of homes are owner-occupied. This is from 2016, because recall, we didn't update this. We didn't invest in the update. We also show that renter-occupied homes, renters occupy for the most part multifamily products in McMinnville. We looked at what's cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened. So, if cost-burden is anything over, where households are spending more than 30% on their, between 30 and 50% on their household, house costs per month of their budget, and severely cost-burdened is over 50%. And so, this shows the numbers for that, and we were, we were trending pretty well with the state and the county there. But we just got new numbers in from 2021 census data that shows that McMinnville is now 26.5% of our households in McMinnville, that's about 1,200 households, are in the severely cost-burdened state. So, they are now at a 50% level of their budget is going to housing costs, which puts them in a vulnerable position. It also puts McMinnville into a new category of what's considered housing distress statewide. This shows all the other communities that are similar to McMinnville and where they sit on that. So, we are right here. I didn't count how far down we are. I don't know. It looks like 15th in the state for being severely cost-burdened. And in 2016, so this is 2021, so five years previous, we were down here. So, we've got, I did count that. We've gone up 30, 30 points in this, this graph. In the wrong direction, I would say. That's a short period of time that has, that has caused us to go in that direction. And I am standing before you again, like I did in 2016, very nervous that this is going to get worse over the next couple of years before it gets better. We talked about affordability is critical, and it's an increasing problem in McMinnville. So, this shows, I haven't updated this from last year, so this number might be different, but our median household income's $55,400, what they can afford in housing costs, and what our average home sales price was at that time, which was $398, too. So, we're not even close. Housing supply contributes to affordability, and supply is an increasing problem. This is our updated building permits list. We put this in the budget book every year to show you what's going on with permitting. The goal is multifamily. So, anytime we have a couple of larger multifamily projects, you're seeing these, these upticks here. But the housing needs analysis showed that we should be issuing 233 housing permits per year to keep up with growth and demand. And I've put a bar across where that would look like in McMinnville if we were doing that. And you can see back in the time between 2000, in the early 2000s, we were pretty much there. We, we haven't been there in a while. This shows building permits housing by decade in McMinnville. And so, a lot of people talk about how we're growing so fast now. But if you actually look at the numbers, it shows that we were growing, issuing more housing permits in the decade of the 90s and 2000, 2009, and the 70s was a high-growth period, too, apparently. And this shows if we did over the 10 years, 233 housing units per year, where that would fall in that graph. So, we've done it before. We've, we've been, we've grown at that rate before. And then, this, this shows that in the period 2000 and 2009, we were doing that as well. The last two years, I just wanted to share with you, we issued 88 household permits and 143 in 2022, so last year, and in 2021, 143. So, even with Lennar building at the rate they're building in that subdivision, we're not issuing a. not issuing a lot of housing permits, it's all occurring in one area. And so people talk about how much growth is occurring because they see so much happening in that one little area, but it's not happening around the community. So our results, after updating everything, we show that we probably will need 202 gross acres of housing land to meet land need over the next 20 years in the planning horizon, and we're taking the number that is a higher-density number to, to get there. So we could go at our historic density, which was 5.05 units per gross acre, or we can go towards what we're trying to get to, 5.46 units per acre, and so that's, that's the 202 number. And then for our urban reserve area, we'd be looking at a little bit over 1,000 acres in addition to that. So any questions about the housing piece of this?
I have a question, Heather. Mayor's not here to call on me.
Counselor Peralta, my, my.
I haven't seen very many places in the Willamette Valley that have succeeded in providing housing inventory to people in the lowest half of the housing market. Your analysis seems to track with that. I don't see much reason for optimism, even if we do everything that you want us to do in terms of this. So I feel like in order to provide that category of housing, we need to be providing more subsidized housing as a community. So can you talk a little bit about how those kinds of strategies might fit into this?
Yeah, and that's a great question, and I just realized I don't have that in my PowerPoint. So the other part of House Bill 2003 is it tells cities, after you do a housing needs analysis and talk about how you're gonna meet that need, you also need to put together what they call a housing production strategy, which talks about how are you gonna meet all the different needs of housing that you've identified. So I shared with you, we're at like, I forgot the number, 33, 34% of our, how is, future housing needs to be 80% AMI or less, and that will probably be subsidized, or need to be subsidized. So we are going, we have to submit that housing production strategy by December 31, 2024. That's in the bill as well. We did a draft strategy document when we were putting this all together, because we were having the same discussion when we were talking about choice and everything like that, and how to, how to create the right housing in this community. So there are, there's regulatory programs recommended in there, there's funding programs recommended in there, and the city's going to need to go through a process of deciding which are the ones that we want to explore, so that we can try to create that subsidy for the housing to make that, for that affordability to occur.
Can I, can I follow up? Thanks. How granular does, does the information have to be? By that, I mean, where I live, and I know this isn't necessarily the norm throughout the city, there's five at least properties that are derelict, and I'm wondering if condemnation can be something that we add in. I've asked about it a few times, and I just think that, you know, given especially the size of some of the buildings that are not being redeveloped in that area, that that might be something that, that could help move the needle a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know if condemnation's, and Beth's gonna help lead this community through that discussion, she's done it with a couple of other communities. In our strategy that we put together in draft form before this housing production strategy concept came out of the state, we talked about a vacant property tax. So if people were leaving their properties vacant and not investing in them, so they could be housing, that we would tax those properties in addition to that as sort of a stick to get redevelopment occurring. Condemnation, I don't know if that's one of the ones that's available to cities. Beth?
Well, I haven't seen cities use condemnation in a big way, but I believe that it is a power that cities and counties can wield.
Oh, yeah, they can use it.
Certainly, and I would suggest looking at it in a, a very targeted way. It's not clear to me, and I'd wanna talk to a lawyer, about whether a vacancy tax is, is legal. We've talked about this in a number of different cities, and it's not apparent to us that it's legal. But one of the things that, that I think needs to happen at the state level is some changes in laws to support cities in this kind of thing, like a vacancy tax, for instance.
We were talking about this today, when we were talking about legislative issues in front of McMinnville in terms of housing, and how, how to, how to try, so right now, when you have a housing supply issue, not enough supply and a higher demand, your, your developers are building into the higher-end housing, that's, that's where their markup is, right? And so that's happening in McMinnville. So we need to increase supply to try and reduce that piece of it and get more housing on the market for other income levels, but we also, I think we need carrots and sticks. I think we need regulatory framework to require the affordable housing to be built, and we need resources as incentives to help build that affordable housing.
And Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on, on what Sal was asking, and I ask this every time we have one of these discussions regarding state mandates, what's the penalty if we don't do, follow the state mandates? What, what, what cost do we incur as a city, or what problems, when they pass a legislative bill that says you have to do XYZ, what if we don't do XYZ?
So legally, they can remove your planning program, and the state then runs the planning program, the DLCD office runs it, because you have to provide one. Now, they haven't, to my knowledge, done that to any city, but they, in this last legislative session, the, the bill in the end that failed 3414 had in it a housing enforcement, propping up a housing enforcement department and office at the, at the Department of Planning, DLCD, to enforce cities performing to the mandates. So, I don't know.
Okay.
But that failed, so.
That failed, so it didn't happen. I mean, it's one thing for them to demand that we do something, it's another thing altogether for them to enforce it, and I'm not necessarily saying we shouldn't do what they're asking us to do, but I just wanna be kind of wide-eyed about what the options are.
Yeah.
Because like Sal said, and why I'm following up on Sal's comment, I haven't seen any of the programs in, in the county actually being successful. And so this, this forcing us to go down a path that so far hasn't really shown a propensity to fix the problems, I just wonder if there's another option available for us.
Well, I mean, here's the reality, and you're gonna hear my value statement here, and I've been a planner in Oregon for 25 years. Planning in Oregon's not working for housing. We are 48th in the nation for the cost of housing for, you know, per capita, so I don't think you're gonna find it successful anywhere now the question, in Oregon. Now, the question is, what do we need to do to make it successful? And I guess I would suggest to you, rather than thinking about the mandates that we need to respond to, to the state, you know, we need to make a decision. It gets back to that, that discussion of if we don't provide supply and supply of the appropriate types of housing, this community will gentrify. It's happening today as we speak, and it's gotten worse over the last couple of years, and it will continue to get worse. And if that's the direction we wanna go as a community, then we can go in that direction, right? I, I know how to put a planning program together to support that, there's communities I can look to. If we want to go in a direction where, you know, we, we still have a multitude of different income levels that we're serving with housing, that we have first-generation, you know, homeowners, that we, that we're able to serve that demographic, then let's plan for that, let's do what we wanna do for our community, rather than thinking about the state mandates.
Thank you for that. Next question, just for clarity, I mean, I know, I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure it's really clear on the record, the 218 acres still that we are, it's in deficit after all that we just brought in from the UGB?
Yes, and it's 202 acres.
So we, we still need that much more beyond what we approved?
Yes, but I'll walk you through what that looks like as well. There's, we still, there's another piece of this puzzle we haven't done was, so this has, this shows what our land need is based on our existing status quo programs with this assumption that we're gonna try and grow to greater density. We can decide, you know what, let's grow to even more greater density and look at more, we call it land use efficiencies in my world, but look at how to bring more housing units into your existing boundary, that's more density, more housing units into your existing boundary, so that we limit the amount of land that we're expanding the boundary from. Those are, those are gonna be community value choices, and my recommendation is we're, we're gonna need to do that over this next year, because we are showing land need. So we have to get back to the state and say, how are we gonna meet it? The first thing we do is look at these land use efficiencies, see if, based on our choices, we're reducing the need, and then the last thing we do is look at UGB amendment, if there's still additional need after those choices have been made.
Okay, and the community thus far has made it clear they don't want us to go too compacted, right? They're, 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 they're looking for us kind of in this balanced approach.
I guess so. I mean, I always tell people in McMinnville, I find it one-third, one-third, one-third. There's one-third no growth at all, one-third don't grow the boundary at all, and go really dense within the community, and the other third, that's sort of this managed growth, so.
Okay, and then final question, and if you don't wanna answer it and wanna tell me, we can do this offline, I'm fine with that. Can you give me a 30-second descriptive difference between a standard UGB and this, and the, and the choice that was made probably before I was on the council to do this other version of a UGB?
The sequential UGB?
Yeah, what exactly?
UGB is the same, so the urban growth boundary's the same, and there's no difference there, it's just the process to get there. So the sequential UGB is, we didn't invest a half a million dollars over the last year, hire a bunch of temporary planners, and put a UGB amendment together to go with this needs analysis that we're submitting to the state at the end of this year, because we would, by state law, need to show how we're meeting the need. We went to the state and said, we need more time, we'll send you the needs analysis, and we'll continue, we want more time to continue to do the work, and so we negotiated two years more time. That's the sequential UGB.
Okay, so it comes later. Got it, thank you.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, you hit on something that I think is one of the biggest problems that I have with Oregon's land use laws, which is that I, I want, I would like for us to move towards density. Our land use laws are intended to create that density, but if you don't have builders in the marketplace who are gonna build that type of density, changing the laws isn't going to force that. So when you talk about planning efficiencies to encourage that kind of density within the existing UGB, can you talk to us a little bit about what some of the triggers are to sort of encourage that? I mean, the missing middle housing law seems to be intended to help accomplish that over time, but then that requires a willing seller and a builder to redevelop it and
Yeah.
so on, so.
Well, I guess I would say, I don't think it all falls on the builders, the developer's shoulders as to why we're not getting the density here in McMinnville, maybe that they see in the metro area. I think it's a couple of things. Develop, when developers buy land and are putting together development, time is money, they wanna know they can get through the system. If they're coming into a community that has strong NIMBYism occurring through the public hearing process and policy decisions being made responsive to that, then that's what they're looking at when they're putting their, their product together. They, they just wanna know they can get through it. The, the process itself, one, and then two, that they can sell the product at the end as well. So they're looking at what's the market going to respond to, and what is the policy decision going to be made as I bring this, this product, project forward. If you recall, we've limited many projects that would have been denser, so I think of the one at Baker Creek and Hill Road, that commercial land of five to six acres, and we, we limited the height on that. Well, limiting the height on that limits the density on that, and that was, that was intended to be multifamily. We've done that on a couple of other things. So we're making policy choices as a community that's also limiting density, and the developers are trying to figure out how to work with that.
Any additional questions, or should we move on to the remainder of your presentation?
Yeah.
Just one comment. You know, what I hear you saying that is that the values of the, of the consumers, of the products being put forward, and of the neighbors around those products are not aligning, aligning with the land use planning laws as they were laid out. And so what we're getting is not a complete, if, if, if the values of the buyers aligned with what the land use planners wanted, or the legislator wants when they pass this stuff, we wouldn't be having this problem, but there's no alignment there. Am I hearing you correctly?
That, I think that's part of it, and most of us making these decisions already happily live in existing conditions that are not similar to what we're, we're talking about for the future, too. Let's be honest. Okay, so the economic opportunity analysis, there's 15 minutes, I wanna get through this. So this is all about supporting our local economic development strategy. This is also a goal in our land use laws, it's goal nine, there's five steps we need to follow, and the important thing for you to recognize is you can do those steps in any order that you want to, and two of the steps that are important for McMinnville is this assessment of community economic development potential and a community economic development vision. So it talks about how we go through the process of doing visioning and getting public input on our economic development strategy moving forward, and then we create economic development objectives, and we talk about how to, how to create a supply of competitive, short-term sites to meet those economic development objectives, how do we make sure we're providing adequate sites and facilities, so making sure the market has the right type of sites to, to respond to, and then again, we're also looking at 2014 horizon. So our history here in McMinnville is we adopted one in 2001, we adopted another one in 2013, and then we started drafting a new one in 2020 with this other needs analysis work. We decided to draft a new one because we had just finished going through adopting the first economic development strategic plan for this community in the MacTown 2032 effort, so we adopted that in 2018, and so that then informed this sort of new EOA effort. I won't go through this, because you guys all are aware of this, but it did remind me of the amount of public engagement we did with this and the SWOT analysis we did and the data collection. So important to know are some things, so our household income, median household income is less than most of our competitor cities around both Oregon and also what we look at externally outside of Oregon. This shows our average annual pay, again, is less than the county, and less than the state, and less than the, the country. So we've talked a lot about that, we have low wages here in McMinnville, which contributes to our affordability issues. We also looked at where is the forecasted employment meant to occur here in Yamhill County, and a lot of it is in what we call eds and meds, so education and medicine, and that's true nationwide. Then we looked at data for where are the jobs by sector in McMinnville, and 15% of our jobs are in manufacturing, so that means 85% are in other sectors other than manufacturing, I think we lose sight of that sometimes. And then in our manufacturing jobs, about food and beverage is about a quarter of that. We looked at the average pay per sector in terms of the different types of jobs we have, and where that 40,000 average pay lands in there. So manufacturing, healthcare, and government are all paying more than the other sectors. And then we developed seven or eight goals, three primary goals, and then five strategies below that to achieve those goals. And you'll notice the first one is accelerate growth in living wage jobs. So the first question was, how do we raise wages in this community? So when you're doing an economic opportunity analysis, you do the same thing, you determine job growth based on your population growth within that planning horizon that you've chosen, so you collect the data. Then you determine how many jobs per acre are going to land on these lands, these, in terms of how you're setting aside land to meet these jobs. So we're determining how many jobs per acre occurs in McMinnville both now and in the future, and then we're assigning our future job needs to that land need, essentially. So this talks about the number, the EOA has all this data in it, but talks about the types, the total new employment numbers that we're looking for and, and that we're gonna put into land need. And then the buildable lands inventory, again, we went through and looked at where's vacant and partially vacant lands for commercial development and industrial development, so red's commercial, blues industrial, and we showed that we have 508 total acres of vacant and partially vacant commercial and industrial land. And then this talks a little bit about what that looks like, especially from the commercial side. So again, there's some limitations on the commercial land supply that we currently have and what it's being used for. So there's the 27 acres that was planted in tiles and vines, and then there's the acreage next to the hotel that will go into multifamily. What we did not put into our buildable lands inventory, because this has not occurred, was the value choice of the city to rezone 40 acres of industrial land to commercial land. This will be important, because as I tell you what the land deficit is for commercial and industrial, these will be some of the land use efficiencies that we'll be talking about, about how to reduce those deficits. The employment capacity, we talked about where we felt the, those jobs would be in the different types of sectors that we showed you, is for job sectors, it's all based on past data. And then the employees per acre discussion, so we talked about what we So we talked about what we felt would be the, we could expect for employees per acre, 11 jobs per acre on, in the industrial side, and 23 jobs per acre on the commercial side. That's based on past historic performance, and also what we see as trends moving forward and having discussions about that. Uniquely also in this document is, we talked about, so we brought in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and we had a lot of discussion about, how do you achieve some of these attractors that are economic development forces that are in your strategic plan if you're just looking at things from the data point of jobs per acre? And what that means is, if you think about the Evergreen campus, that is a very large campus in terms of acreage, it's not a large job producer. But it's a huge economic development asset for this community. So you don't want to lose track of that type of amenity when you're just talking about jobs per acre. So there is the ability in the economic opportunity analysis to talk about those types of things as other land site needs and to calculate that as well. So we do have that in the EOA, it's called Exhibit 57. For this update, we removed two big projects out of that because they have both gone back to us, and so they're not moving forward on them. So that decreased the overall acreage need from 104 acres for those sort of, what, set aside sites to 49 acres. So that was one of the efficiencies that we went through with this process. So the results are, for the planning horizon, we show a land need of 29 acres of industrial land over the next 20 years, and a land need of 159 acres over the next 20 years for commercial land. And then for the urban reserve area, we're looking at a little over 400 and some odd acres divided between the two. Then we also looked at public land needs, so that's the parks and the schools and the religious land, government, and then semi-public services. This is the one where it was fairly easy to calculate all this, not much changed because capacity wasn't changing. But we just brought in all that was brought in for the current, from that Phase Two UGB expansion in terms of acreage for these needs. If you recall, we locked everything up in a framework plan and said, this is exactly how this UGB amendment's moving forward to meet our land need per the court remand. And so it showed us what our land was that we brought in, we already knew what our land need was, and we just got to the differential. So we're showing about 94 acres of deficit in that category. So.
So, I have a question before you move on. I apologize.
That's all.
When I drove into town today, the sign coming in said McMinnville population 35,000 something, right? And the original planning period we had was from 2003 to 2023, right?
Yeah, the one we just did, the UGB.
Yeah, yeah. And so at the end of that 2023, we were expected to have a 40-something thousand population, right? My question is, are we, is this based on, these numbers you're using still based on the old plan?
No.
Or based on the actuals?
Well, no, not really. So we're talking about population forecasts, which trend off of historic trends. So the population forecast we're using was established in 2017. That looks at a population forecast for 2041 of 47,498. So about, I can't do the math in my head, but a little bit over 3,000 more people than what we were expected to have in 2023. None of these forecasts are going to be, actually, I would probably say none of these forecasts have ever been accurate, because they're forecasts, they're looking at past trends. And here in McMinnville, it's based on a past trend of growth. I showed you the growth per decade, and then we didn't have any land supply. So our growth slowed down, we've been in the slowest growth period of this community for the last 10, 12 years. So that then trends it down. I think when the UGB lands come in, we're going to see that average annual growth rate go up again.
Well, let me push back on that, because the state economists this year was freaking out, because for the last two years, the state population's been declining.
Yes, but if you look at the numbers, it wasn't significant, it's not a large number of decline. And the other thing that, it's based on the census numbers, and there's the suspicion that the census numbers are not accurate because the environment in which those census numbers were taken. There's a lot of people who didn't.
And a lot of that decline is in Multnomah County.
I think some of it's in Yamhill County, too.
I was just saying, a lot of it is in Multnomah.
So, I mean, again, it's choices. We can make choices on how we want to plan. We can update to the new population forecast. It's just, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars and a couple of years to do so, and again, it's never going to be perfect. With the new cycle where we have to redo this work every eight years, we're going to be in a checks and balances, I guess, with that work. If you think about it, we haven't, we haven't initiated this analysis work since 2001. So we come up with this land need of 484 acres, let's say it's that. So how are we going to meet that need is the big question, and that gets to the other discussion we were just having, which is, we're not done yet. So we've discovered, we've identified our land need based on this first step. Our next step as a community will be talking about, how do we meet that need? Do we want to meet that need within our existing boundaries and do more dense and intense development? Or do we want to expand the UGB to meet that need? Or do we want to do a little bit of both? And some of the ways to think about this is, from the housing, so we have 202 acres of housing, we can look at higher density housing. Where can we put higher density housing in this community that we haven't already identified? And reduce acreage that way, if that's the direction we want to go. In terms of the industrial land need and the commercial land need, we've already made a value choice, that we want that innovation center to be higher density jobs per acre, 17 jobs per acre. So that's a little bit more than half, 50% more than the 11 jobs per acre. So we'll go back in and recalculate it based on that, and start showing, we'll be able to drop more jobs per acre on that 150 acres of industrial land. And that, I think, will eliminate the land need for industrial. We have the 40 acres to rezone for commercials, that automatically right there will start reducing the need. So there's ways to go through this and start sort of chinking away at it that makes sense based on community decisions we've already made, and then we start talking about, do we want to make more decisions like that? And then if we don't, then we do a UGB amendment and work through that process. So the next steps for this land needs analysis is, we have a public hearing scheduled for September 7th with the Planning Commission. It will come up to you as a recommendation with a public hearing. I expect you'll probably get it in late October, early November, for a couple of public hearings, and then adoption, and then a submittal to the state by the end of the calendar year. And then we have more next steps in this whole program. So we have to do our housing production strategy that's due into the state by the end of next year. I've tried to calculate how much that will be in terms of consultant expenses and in-kind staff support. I don't expect it to be a lot, because we have, we have a lot of work done on that already. Then we, and we have a grant from the state to help off, well, no, that grant is not for this fiscal year. So, but we have a contract with Bess team to do that work. Then we'll have to do land use efficiencies. I tried to calculate the costs associated with that, and then the UGB amendment, and I've tried to calculate the cost for that. We will be applying for some technical assistance funds from DLCD to help offset these costs. But this is just to get us to the end of this mandate through this House bill that we're working on. I do think McMinnville would be served by an urban reserve area, and the state has flipped its, has changed its tune on whether an urban reserve area is a good tool or not. Now they are saying it is a good tool to promote cities being able to move and to continue to have buildable land supply within their system to achieve housing supply. And so if we did want to do that with our existing work, because it builds all on itself, we would have to submit that to the state by the end of 2027. So I provided some information on the cost for that. And then per the statute that has now changed everything into this eight-year cycle, we will be doing this work all over again and submitting it for 2031, and probably starting the needs analysis in 2027. So if we did an urban reserve area, we're going to turn around right away and start this process for this, you know, eight-year cycle all over again. Or if we didn't do the urban reserve area, we still will have this cycle just a couple years down the road. So we, growth management is going to be, and growth planning will be a sort of consistent cycle at cities now. So with that, I think I hit right at seven.
You did pretty, 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 pretty close, yeah. Really good. Wonderful. I think we're just wrapping up a work session. I'm sorry to not be starting the council meeting on time. Counselors that are joining us, please feel free to join us. Are there any last questions for Community Development Director Richards before we transition into the regular meeting?
I do have one quick one.
Yeah, Counselor Chenoweth.
Are you going to be bringing, thank you, Mayor. Are you going to be bringing forth ideas on how we can address these deficiencies in the commercial area and in the residential area going forward? Should we expect to see some stuff?
Yes, so next year you should expect to see some stuff. We would like to work that with a consultant group and a project advisory committee, like we've done all the other work, and bring you recommendations, and have work sessions with you as we go to sort of bounce, bounce it off of you and get policy direction. Yes, next year.
Thank you very much. It is 7:02, we'll end the work session. We're just going to take a quick two-minute break so people can clear their plates, grab some water if they need, et cetera, and then we will start the regular council meeting four minutes late at 7:04. All right, counsel, if we get you to rejoin, I would like to call the July 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council to order and ask our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, to do a roll call.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie.
President.
Counselor Chenoweth.
President accounted for.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counsel President Garvin is making his way over, and Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you so much. I would like to ask Counselor Sal Peralta to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a clip on your pledge. We're now going to go to comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and she will announce your name and unmute your mic when your turn is up. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
No one so far.
No one so far. Would anybody in the gallery like to provide public comment this evening? Would anyone on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? And is anyone on the phone? No one's on the phone. Okay, thank you. I would now like to invite up McMinnville Water and Light Commissioner and former mayor, Ed Gormley, who has brought a gift for the council.
(Inaudible) Mayor. Before we get started, um, do any of you remember the last time I came to the council? After you had this, you had this.
Cake or something?
When I came to talk to Mayor Olson, he was on one of his campaign promises, and that was to have a leadership. So Rhodes was, pardon me, so we had a lot of fun with him. As I, kind of fluffy behave, I was, most of the cancer idea was, anyway, so it's funny to be back here tonight, and, you know, suddenly we have, we have to, we open the meeting. Anyway, I'm here tonight to share with you this great history, and I'm glad of what we're all discussing it last, which is, it's really interesting to read how the council owned water systems at the time, as we unearthed, laying down, building down, consuming stuff, everybody thought, oh, this is, this is, so one time I believe we were a pocket for being able to take a pocket of the system and just say, you know, Third Street, which was a great project, a lot of complicated diseases, so, anyway, the council worked where, so it's interesting to read here about burning cordwood to fire, so I have a copy of the history, and we done a couple of years ago, maybe we prepared the, the, a lot of things, so, so, first copy goes to Mayor, I have a copy of the producer's stuff, but anyway, I put some notes in there.
You annotated it for me?
Did you do all of those?
He'll be on his way shortly.
I will, Chris, enjoy reading this, because it's a great history, and lots of us, we should be proud of it, so.
Jessica, this is for you. Good to see you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kelly, all the years you and I have worked together, enjoy reading that. Okay. And Sal, a copy for you also.
He is doing the best, he's laughing.
Doing bank robbers last. Oh my God, let's see. Oh, Zach Geary, I'm sorry.
I'm reading.
Zach, there you go, my friend. And so, we have a couple departments that Water and Light works with very closely.
You're not one of them.
But anyway, anyway, Jeff, I want you to enjoy this. This is a better history than Springfield, and always enjoy working with you, so.
Can I just note for the record, Mayor Gormley's excellent taste in shirts.
I have one for Ann. So you know that the Engineering Department had lots of stuff, plans that come into the Building Department, get sent over to Water and Light for approval, different things and that, so, anyway, and then the person that's kind of in charge of all this, Heather, this is for you, it looks like you're fighting allergies and stuff. Good to see you. Walter, I don't have a copy for you, but I will get you a copy, I promise. And then I have one for Susan.
He's interim, you know.
Okay. And what? Anyway, so.
He's trying not to be here.
I have a copy for Adam. I'll drop it off at Adam's business.
I think Adam is probably on his way to the dais, is my guess. I think he's in the building.
Adam is in the building.
You think he's out of town?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay. So he's on his way, but on his way electronically, understood.
Anyway, thank you for letting me come and tease you a little bit tonight, and this is, you should be really happy. You reached out, asked everybody, did any comments or anything? Quiet night, City Hall. Always liked.
I feel like you may have jinxed us. But also, thank you, while you said it was a quiet night.
Claudia, thanks for the help with all that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for bringing these. Thank you, of course, for your service with the city of McMinnville and all of your leadership. I'm sure counsel will enjoy, enjoy reading about Oregon's oldest utility, our own utility. Pretty exciting. Thank you, Mayor. We will now hear reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I'll start to my left this evening with Counselor Geary.
In between meetings, DEIAC tomorrow, the, the, MIRAC had a meeting recently, talked about electric vehicle charging infrastructure, had some questions and brought that back, and then went to executive session, and then the committee asked me to liaison for the city's community task force, the safety task force. Had a meeting today that I was unable to attend, so hope to catch up and have a update for you guys on what they discussed after I'm able to catch up with them.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth.
I have nothing to report. Any VLC will be meeting tomorrow, and Parkway is next week.
Thank you. And Counselor Peralta?
The Historic Landmarks Committee has met twice since the last time I was here. The first one was on an application related to the mini Super Hidalgo on Third Street, and the second related to steps on a residential property that could come to us. I probably won't report on that. Council governments met, passed the budget. Council governments met, passed the budget for this fiscal year, and legislatively, this will be my last report on this, we did get the $5 million for planning and development in this budget cycle.
Congratulations. Great. Thank you. Councilor Payne?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Menke?
On the Affordable Housing Committee, I've been working in a subcommittee, and we've been working on public and private partnerships, a number of different ideas generated and some interesting people talked to. Still working on the construction excise tax and, uh, so refining it somewhat. And then YCAP, we passed a budget for YCAP last meeting, which was last Tuesday.
Thank you so much. Just to add on to the, to Councilor Menke's MHC report, I just let the council know that at our last meeting, I, um, I, uh, expressed my intent to resigning as chair of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. It's been, I was able to start that role as we started that committee, which started itself as a task force about six years ago, responsively, kind of to an education process the council did after dealing with some emergency housing situations. And it, the last six years have been a really amazing time. We've changed a lot of our infrastructure. We've opened up many, many pathways to create more affordable housing. We've, uh, we've, we've checked off a lot of the low-hanging fruit. We've taken things that were practices but not policy, and we've turned them into policy. We've created expedited processes to bring more affordable housing into the city, and we've actually expanded the scope of the committee so that it focuses on those earnings zero to 120% of the median family income. So we're also providing affordable housing that reaches into our workforce, deep into our workforce. And so I'm really very honored to have served on that committee, and the, the, the implementation of an affordable housing fund in our budget process this year, and the passage of the construction excise tax is one of the means to fund that, and knowing that there's going to be a planner coming online to work specifically on that, just, it makes me feel as though this committee has done a tremendous amount of wonderful work, and I am so pleased as well that I've been able to co-chair with Councilor Menke, and she just dives so deep into the work and has been an incredible asset to, to that committee and continues to be through the tremendous amount of subcommittee work that she does. And as an extension of that, I will be kind of reshuffling some committee assignments, not just because of that reason, and as Council President reaches out to each of you for your one-on-ones to kind of do a check-in, one thing he'll be checking in with is on your committee assignments and capacity around that, and of course, my door is open too to have those conversations, but not looking to toss everybody up into the air, but just to know that this is a great opportunity to express if there's some work that you're especially loving or not loving, things you wish you would be working more in, et cetera, to please talk to us about that in the near future. And, let's see, we still don't have Council President on the line, so I'll go to department head reports instead of filling the airtime there. City Manager Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Interim City Attorney Walt Gow.
It has, it has been a busy month, but nothing special to report tonight.
Thank you. Community Development Director Heather Richards.
I wanted to let everyone know, we have a opening on the Planning Commission. It's in Ward One, that's being advertised right now. We're soliciting applications through the end of this month, July 31, with a hope to bring an appointment to you at your second meeting in August. So if you know of anyone in Ward One, or if anyone's interested in learning more about the Planning Commission, please have them call us.
Thank you. And Chief Leifert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just coming from the McMinnville Fire District meeting, they just passed their budget and their taxing authority for the year, so we'll get that filed and get that off of the plate, and I know Finance Director will be happy about that. Also, coming down the pipe, we have the airshow in the end of September. We'll be sending out, as it gets closer, we'll be sending out emails and invites to opportunities that may pop up for those that might be interested in participating in some of the events or working with Bill on some of the other things that are going on. So we will be keeping council informed and involved through that process.
Thank you. And City Recorder Claudia Sisneros?
To report.
Thank you. And Public Works Director Anne Pagano?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And then I will just add, if you haven't RSVP'd to the invitation to the watershed tour, not talking to you, Councilor Menke, I hope you have a great camping trip. I'm not talking to you, Commissioner Johnston, I know you're joining us, and I'm so happy about it, but if anybody hasn't had the opportunity to, oh, it's not camping, but you're traveling.
I'm Councilor Geary.
I said, what did I say?
I said, "Menke."
Oh.
I'm looking at you like...
My apologies. And the point, that if you, if you have an opportunity to RSVP to the watershed tour on August 9, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. And we will now consider Resolution Number 2023-42, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hayworth, Inc. for the procurement, construction, and installation of the Orchard Avenue Storm Main Replacement Project 2023-5. Would, um, uh... Yeah, I don't, I don't think, it's consent agenda, so we're not going to have a presentation on it, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Chenoweth, a second from Councilor Menke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. The motion, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We're not going to do something we don't typically do at McMinnville City Council, but we are going to take a break and go into executive session. I apologize, Mr. Davis, I know it's a not favorite practice, there's a rhyme and reason to it, however, for this evening. So the council will be going into council chambers, and then we will reconvene either to adjourn or potentially to take further action.
And for the record, the, um, executive session is being held pursuant to ORS 192-662E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back to the July 11th, 2023 McMinnville City Council session of the regular, regular meeting in the McMinnville City Council. We took a break to go into executive session, and we are going to come back to consider Resolution Number 2023-43, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement for certain real property located within the city. And I'd like to call on our city manager, Jeff Towery, to present the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, over the last couple of months, with the consensus of the city council, city staff have been negotiating to buy the former RB Rubber property now owned by Northwest Rubber Property in the Alpine District, with, I guess, public encouragement from the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency Commission Committee. Interim City Attorney Walt Gow, Community Development Director Heather Richards, and I have been working together and working with representatives of Northwest Rubber to bring forward to you the purchase and sale agreement that you have before you tonight that would be authorized by Resolution Number 2023-43. In addition to the authorization to, to sign the purchase and sale agreement, this resolution also contemplates contracting for additional environmental work to assess the property and to come up with recommendations and potential remediation plans that will also be presented to the council at future public meeting. I'd like to turn it over to Director Richards and Interim City Attorney Walt Gow to provide a more overview, any detailed updates they'd like to provide on the item prior to asking the council to move forward on this recommendation.
Mayor and council, this purchase and sale agreement, it contains a substantial number of terms and conditions which are similar to real estate transactions of this scope and nature. It is a sale, a proposed sale at a price of $4.25 million. The sale is to take place on or before October 31st, 2023. It is subject to numerous conditions involving the, um, involving the study of the property and the acceptance of the condition of the property, and a notice by the, by the buyer that is, that this buyer is prepared to cede with the closing based upon the, the study of the property. It also requires that the city have approved both Phase One and Phase Two reports, assessments undertaken with regard to this property. That, uh, that is part of, of the process that you go through with industrial properties, especially older industrial properties, which have potential environmental, uh, issues. The city has to have obtained permits and approvals if there are any needed. The city will have to have undertaken and completed, um, the appropriation of funds for the purpose of spending the funds to acquire this property. The, this process will likely include an intergovernmental agreement between the council on behalf of the city and the council on behalf of the, excuse me, the, the board of the Urban Renewal District, which of course is the council, entering into an agreement that, whereby the Urban Renewal District will be funding the cost of, the financing for the holding cost on this property until such time as the city can obtain a purchaser for the purpose of redevelopment and, and sell the property down, down the road. So that, that process and the appropriation of those funds are conditions to the closing of this transaction. There is a process that needs to be gone through with regard to an escrow holdback to assess the cost of the removal of personal property at the property, and the holdback of an estimated amount of 75% of the cost of removal of the original assessment of those properties with regard to what's remaining at closing, and a process of being able to hold that money for use in the city affecting the removal if the seller does not remove those items, which consist of supplies, fixtures, moving vehicles, most prominently, manufacturing equipment, and of course, inventory and supplies. The, um, the agreement calls for a one-year warranty period with regard to the representations and warranties of the city. This is somewhat analogous to the one-year warranty period that the city obtains with regard to all construction contracts on public improvements, though they're not entirely the same, but they're, it's a similar, in this case, the same period of time. There is going to be a license agreement that allows the seller to remain in possession of the property after the closing for the purpose of removing, doing an orderly removal of its personal property, which is anticipated to be completed on or before December 31st of this year. Those are the, those are the highlights of the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions which the council may have. The, the, the resolution that you have before you does authorize the city manager to enter into a consulting agreement for environmental, a Level One and Level Two environmental assessment of the property. That has to do with both determination of this, as to whether this property is an acceptable condition to purchase by the city, and secondarily, what types of remediation might be needed and whether or not the state of Oregon could be enlisted to assist the city in reclaiming this property for productive uses that the city wishes to see happen. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. City Manager, did you want to add?
Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify for the public record, the city council has received a hard copy of Resolution Number 2023-43 and the referenced purchase and sale agreement. The city recorder will be appending this document to the agenda packet electronically, and it will become part of the public record.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Council, Councilor Peralta, Councilor Payne? None? Okay. Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-43.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Geary and a second from Councilor Chenoweth. All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, signify by saying nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. I will now adjourn the city council meeting. No? Wait? No?
First reading.
Oh.
Fire IGA.
Oh, yeah, the fire.
Oh, my, my apologies. No, no, don't do it.
Oh, good, very bad.
Okay, um, we'll now consider, it would have made you sit out here all this time for nothing. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-44, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of McMinnville, Oregon, McMinnville Fire District, and for temporary fire and emergency response services for a specified term. I would like to call on our fire chief, Rich Leifert, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This IGA was just passed by the rural McMinnville Fire District just before I came over, so what you see in front of you is the contract that was worked out, the IGA that was worked out between the city and district attorneys, and, and the fire district has bought off on it. This is the agreement that would allow the city to provide services for the next six months. That was budgeted for, within the city budget that you adopted, and it provides those services as we transitioned the new district into, into being, for lack of a better term. And it provides for funding mechanisms and the cost, cost recovery for the city for the loan, for the advance that the city is doing for the purposes of providing emergency services to the new district.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Councilor Menke? Yes.
And I don't know if this is important or not, but there is a typo, one, two, three, four paragraphs down, whereas the city will, the district will levy taxes. It says 2023 to 2024 tax year.
Yes, we'll make that correction.
Send an email about this today. Did it get corrected?
It'll get corrected on the amended packet that I post. Additionally, on your dais, there are a redline version and a clean version that Walt provided us, and we'll also enter those into the record.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure it was right. I see. Well, this one says 2023, 24, too.
24 is correct.
34.
No, 34.
Yes.
Do it. Okay, so you're sure it's corrected somewhere. All right, that's all I got.
There'll be a replacement Phase One.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion or questions?
I, I just wanted to make an additional comment, that the agreement does call for a follow-up IGA to be worked on and finalized between the district and the city relating to the actual transfer of assets. That, that is not encompassed in this agreement. This agreement is just covering services and payment of services, and the, and the, the assets will remain the property of the city during this interim period until such time as a subsequent IGA transferring the assets to the district is worked through. And there's a number of issues that relate to PERS and union contracts and other factors that need to be incorporated into that agreement, but that, that work will commence here in the next month.
Thank you. All right. Not hearing any additional discussion, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-44.
So moved.
So moved, just amended or changed.
A motion from Councilor Peralta and a second from Councilor Menke to approve, yes, to approve Resolution Number 2023-44 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously, and we will now adjourn the council meeting at 8:12 PM. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.